Today is Wednesday, April thirteenth. The time is ten thirty-three a.m. This is a special meeting agenda to consider our Justice Center expansion. And we've often referred to it as the new building, attending our commissioners Duncan Brooks and Phillyos. Do we have any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. We have a couple of business items, and it's the presentation of the Justice Center expansion elevations. This is a potential action item, and we welcome LCA Architects. Go right ahead, gentlemen.
You gotta push your button.
Yeah.
Good, thank you. We've got a couple little updates to the floor plan we wanted to kind of go over, but then present our, our concept elevations for the building and really get a, some feedback from you and make sure that the, the look and the feel of the building design is kind of fit with your vision of what the county going forward would, would like to see. And we'll go through materials and things when we look at the elevations and kind of explain how we, you know, tie it back into some of the materials on the existing campus. Ben did a little modification to the floor plan here on the main entry, so I'll have him kind of walk you through that and, and explain the reason why.
Yeah, there should be one.
So we started looking at, in part of the development of the elevations, hopefully that's close enough. Started really looking at how people come into the building and that drove some of the modifications to the floor plan. They're fairly minor, but it's gonna help the functioning flow of the building. And also, it's a courthouse, so it's gotta be identifiable as a courthouse for everybody that's gonna use it. Thank you. You know, jurors, customers coming in, anybody. So the, the modifications really kind of centered around the entryway. What we did is because everybody's, can be barking across the street and walking this way for the most part, everybody, wanted something to identify this as the entry point. So we bumped this out a little bit, and what that's gonna let us do is more queuing space. More queuing space for the security screening, more people can pack in there, I guess, and, and wait in line to go through the security screen. Bumping that out also really strengthened that main kind of corridor through the building, just allow more circulation space once people get into the building. And then, like I said, walking up the sidewalk, it's, it's more easily identifiable where that entrance is. Also, it's part of a courthouse. You want that grand stairway. We want that grand feeling rising up, walking up into the courtroom. So this is gonna let us have that kind of open grand staircase. And this one's gonna overlook the lobby, overlook kind of the streetscape out front. With that, we, we left the exit kind of where we had it. This is gonna let us use the security checkpoint as, I guess, kind of an informal gathering space where people can come in and talk and get out of the main hallway. Changing this also, of course, we changed the stairway kind of configuration, so it affected all the floors. Oh, you're fine. If you can go up a page. So that, that change in the stairway, it, it kind of reconfigured this, which I'll have to verify with probation that it's okay. But i- if you remember, it was kind of a weird shaped hallway, weirdly leading into the Justice Building. So this is gonna let that circulation be a little easier. I, I think this will actually let it function a little better for AMP, where the, before their waiting area was right off that hallway. And this is, this will let the probationers come in off that hallway and kind of be a little more private while they're waiting to get into AMP. Just if you wanna go to the third page, please. The court's floor, it really didn't change anything, again with that kind of grand stairway overlooking the entryway, coming into the main kind of lobby at the court floor and then allowing circulation. And then, kind of the same thing with the prosecutor department. Just wanna go to the next one. It, it just really, just kind of changed their lobby configuration a little bit, kind of moving that stairway over. And again, probably need some verification that's enough room and enough public counter for them. But it, it essentially functions the same as it did before. I think that's the floor plan updates.
And how many, how many individuals would this floor accommodate? You know, rough, I mean, I can count the bays, but I, or the offices, but...
I, yeah, I would have to go back and look at the program. I can't remember off the top of my head how many offices it was. I think, I wanna say thirty-eight for some reason, sticking to my head, but I don't know if that's right.
There were like three or four extra office spaces for growth built into that, too, I believe.
Yeah.
And, and is it assumed that any of these offices would have multiple individuals? Probably the admin staff, maybe.
Yeah, I, I don't think, I think it was all individual attorney offices, but these open spaces would be the legal assistants, the secretary, where that would be, we're envisioning more of an open office type area that's kind of easily configurable however they need it. I guess the other floor plan change on, on every level is we just bumped this stairway out. It, it gives, again, for staff coming in, it's a little more identifiable as that's the entry point. And also just gives a nice place to kind of die that wall into when it's a, you'll see in the elevations that it's a transition of materials at the, the stair towers. It just kind of added some texture to that elevation, really didn't add any square footage or anything.
Yeah, jump to the elevations.
Yeah, I have a few questions.
Sure.
Starting today, when is this gonna be for, open for business?
Starting today, assuming you said go right now, we were kind of talking about this.
From go time, how long is it gonna take till it's open for business?
I would think drawing some plans would probably be ten months-ish, and then probably fourteen to sixteen for construction. Is, is a guess. So probably a little over two years.
Two, three years.
Yeah, probably a little, a little over two, two and a half, maybe, but...
What's the cost?
All I can answer that.
Yeah, we're, we're still right around that same cost estimate that we had last time, which the construction of the building, I think, was eighteen million five. And then with, that was the...
Can you speak up, please? I'm sorry.
That was eighteen million five with the construction and the soft costs. The, I'm sorry, the, the contractor costs and the construction costs at eighteen-five. And then when you add on the soft costs where your, you know, the design fees, the surveys, geotech and all that kind of stuff, it was around that twenty-two million mark, pretty, that same cost estimate we had, I think, in February. Now, that was, you know, we also had a line item in there that was, you know, inflation per year after the cost estimate, which was about five percent per year. And I think that was around seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. You know, we know costs have been just not coming down, obviously, and inflation is a little bit different. So it's, I'm gonna say it's creeping up a million dollars a year.
At one point, when people were here, they were talking about this module and this module and this module. And I said, "How much for the whole thing?" And what they said was about forty-two million. What happened to that? That was said on the record here in our open meeting.
So are you talking about the long-term plan where it had twenty-five million for the new building and then all of movement throughout the county over the next few years would be...
Mm-hmm, yes, yes.
Yeah, so that, that's kind of different than this.
Kind of being all wrapped together. What does it cost?
It's not being wrapped together. They're all individual, individual projects. So this one is separate. If this one gets done, then the other spaces open up and then we can start moving people. So, yeah, it's that long-range binder that we have.
I also, I don't, I'm, I'm not good at reading blueprints. I didn't see, and you can point them out for, to me, please, elevators and ramps.
Sure. If you can go back to the plans. We have, the whole front entryway, kind of how it's ramped now, what would essentially remain. We're, we're envisioning, I guess if you wanna go to the second page. The ramps kind of exist right in here right now. And then envisioning some sort of stairway to tie it into this sidewalk to let people in. Elevators, once they go through the security screening, elevators are over here, and the staff elevator is down here.
Okay, I can see that now that I...
The purple part of that plan is the previous building floor plan that's on there. But where the, the main two entry, entry and exit doors there, that's all a flat plaza, entry plaza that will have the same access ramp on grade that'll go like it does now out in front of the Justice Building and out to the parking lot. So that whole area is ramped. We're just adding, you know, other kind of grand stairs up above between the, the upper set of doors and the, and the street. So there are two, you know, full staff elevators, full staff accessibility to all the floors.
Then the, kind of this area from the parking lot, we know it does have to ramp down now 'cause it does ramp down currently. We just haven't finalized where that ramp's gonna live in there just yet, but it, it has to ramp down in there a little bit.
Then the elevator here for the, that main lobby is the one that's gonna feed the first floor of the existing Justice Building.
And then the secure, in custody transport elevator just going to the holding areas in the courts.
What kind of disruption would this cause?
Yeah, the, the way the, we'll say the two buildings are kind of pushed together. There's a good delineation line there where we're cutting the hole in the main hallway there to the other building. That would be one of the last things that's done in construction. So those two connection points, that whole new construction will be closed off for the existing building to remain operational and, and hold court and all that. Is it going to be noisy and disruptive? Yes. Building a building right next to an existing one, you know, there, there is noise for sure. A few things we've done with other courthouses on having that contractor know kind of what the court's schedule is and what days they're having certain courts in the, you know, couple that are close to really kind of schedule different noisy activities around those so that you're not jackhammering things and, you know, driving piles and, you know, big noisy construction activities while those are going. And if that means that they, you know, work on the weekends, they switch their, their, you know, five-day work week to, you know, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and have, you know, have Monday, Tuesday off if those are the main court days, you know, then, then just work the contractor with that.
This was, you know, definitely gonna, it's gonna be noisy, it's gonna have an impact. But this site is gonna be less impactful than the other site would have been. When we're putting it between the three buildings, it would have impacted all three buildings with noise and vibration and, and that, so...
I would have to guess this courtroom here would be, I mean, that's gonna be the most impacted 'cause it's closer, but that doesn't look like a jury courtroom anyway. But I would guess there's days that courtroom would be kind of unusable just for a noise level. Again, that's something they could coordinate with the courts when, when the time comes.
Yeah, and this site kind of lends itself better to keep those construction activities, like you said, away from the main campus. And you've got, you know, contractor parking and staging that you, you know, might be able to use across the street and a little bit of the parking lot down below that we fenced off to keep those activities kind of collected in that corner.
Any other questions?
More questions on the floor plan?
Yeah, Pat.
What, the, the light green, the large light green space on the left side of the...
This one?
What, what would that be for?
It's the clerks' area. And we, we don't know, we haven't kind of vetted with them on what they would want in that new area, if it's open offices or individual offices or just how that gets configured. But the space is a lot of...
I think we had talked about the float clerks' tribunal.
The what?
The float clerks being located to that area potentially as well.
Seems like a really large...
There's a lot of them.
Distance jury selection would occur if we needed to do that.
That could occur either, there's a large conference training room back here. It is back behind the secure area, or the, in the jury rooms as well. And the courtrooms are quite a bit bigger than what's, what the county has currently. So I think that would let them spread out a little bit more.
Yeah, that one new one looks like, looks comparable size to courtroom one in the courthouse. It would certainly be bigger than the, larger than the courts in, you know, April nine, currently.
Yep.
About the same size as one. And is that the, the portion, the left, that lower left corner, is that gonna meet setbacks? 'Cause I looked on the, on the, the rendering, and it looked like it's really close to the street.
It, it is on the rendering. Anytime you try and match to a, a Google Earth image, it doesn't quite line up right, but it, it does fit within the property lines that we're on the survey we got from the county.
Okay.
It, it lines up right where the Justice Building is now.
Okay. Yeah, I was just cur- concerned about meeting setbacks from North West Hall apartment.
Yep.
It could be a variance to accommodate that.
Nope.
No, we shouldn't, we shouldn't need it.
Yep. And it, it, the whole building does have to go through a City of Court Lane design review process and stuff, so any, any of those issues would get brought up with them.
Jump back to elevation.
And would the, the existing building essentially be changed or would people be moved out of there? Mainly talking about the basement and also possibly the basements.
When the two buildings kind of tie together, when, you know, the holes get cut in the wall, we'd definitely have to shift some people around and move just to get them out of the construction area. And again, to accommodate noise or, or anything like that, they might have to move a little bit.
But I was thinking more permanently after the constru-, you know, once the newer building is completed, is there gonna be plans for movement of offices from, from the existing building to the new one?
Yep. If you can go back to the floor plans, I can... So if you wanna go down, nope, this was, this one's, will work. So one of the tie-in areas is this, I think it's clerks that are in here. And this is gonna be the hallway to transport people to court from the, from the holding. So those guys move over to here. And then all the clerks that are down in, I guess if you wanna go up one sheet, sorry, keep jumping around.
'Cause I know that's been an issue with existing buildings, you know, taking inmates from, through the east door, through that hall and the security area and court.
Yep. And kind of the way the Justice Building is set up, there's kind of no avoiding that. That's the hallway that has to get traveled for court. Everybody does congregate in that hallway, and it, it's certainly not ideal, but it's kind of dealing with the Justice Building set up the way it is. And down in here, this is the tie-in to the new, to the elevators. So these people would have to be relocated, and I believe there are clerks down here now. So those would go up into that green area. Or, or wherever they need to shift, depending on, you know, which clerks in here move up into their, you know, they can shift desks and stuff.
The triangular area right there is the big, right there, yeah. That's where all the float clerks are right now, a lot of them. So the thought is to move them out, and then those other two spaces could shift over. And we're gonna create other spaces in other buildings for clerks to be in and, and on the other floors, too. They're really crowded down there.
Yeah, they are.
They, they literally sit on top of each other.
Yeah.
And, and the other opportunity, it's not shown on here, 'cause we didn't have enough room, but the, the traffic court area that's down here. If we can move that up to a new courtroom, that area could be, potentially become, you know, offices for whoever or evidence storage or whatever it needs to become.
Yeah, with as many judges as we have, I don't know if that's gonna be realistic.
Yeah. But that was kind of one of our thoughts. Trying to get, it, it sounds like there's just a ton of people down there every day when they do traffic court to get some of that congestion out of that area and move those people to a different...
Yeah, yeah, maybe we could have something, something else in that courtroom, perhaps.
So then that's not as high volume of, of people coming in.
Right.
So if, part of your question was, is any of that area in this existing Justice Building remodel included in this project? That answers no. Most of the, the area that's being affected is the new hallway to connect so that this, the existing Justice Building can have access to the elevator, just right, right there where he's pointing.
Right.
And then the existing entryway into the building will be affected with the whole entry security remodel.
Right.
So while this building's being under construction, we go back to page two. While the, the new building is, is under construction, this will remain open, the existing entry to the Justice Building will still remain active as the security checkpoint.
Okay. I think that's a, for me, for now.
For now.
Okay, yeah, jump to outside. And we'll kind of walk around the, the building here a little bit. So we know that this is kind of a prominent vocation on the site for the city and very visible as you're driving down the, the street. So we, you know, wanted something that, you know, is a little bit more on the kind of modern materials, but also using some of the other materials that go back in, from the old courthouse and the, the Justice Center. The two stair towers, go, head to the next page, yeah. So the two stair towers will be most likely made out of masonry, but then clad in metal, metal siding. So the metal siding kind of has this little relief onto it to, to make that pattern that, that you see there, just to have more visual interest in, in those stair towers. How about the next one? So the windows in the stair tower in the back will be kind of similar to the front, these long vertical windows. And our thought is like, at night, these windows have, you know, maybe little LED lights on one side of the window, so it kind of looks like little strip lights and kind of lighting up those corners really neat at night. And then also some, you know, lighting on the building to kind of light up this canopy that's the, the white band that goes over the, the top that maybe is uplit, so it kind of glows at night, sort of thing. The, the vertical column, like the columns that you see there would kind of, would be popped out proud of the glass and be made out of a, a product similar to, to, to make it look like the stone of the old courthouse. So they're larger sized stone, but they're only, you know, a couple inches thick, but it gives that feel that these are stacked up large pieces of stone to kind of match the old courthouse. And it's similar on the, on the bottom there. Now, they can either be that stone or we can tie in the, the brick work of the existing building so that the two kind of flow together a little bit. And that's kind of where we want a little feedback from, from you all as far as what you, what your direction, you'd like the look of this building to, to go and how the, the campus to feel. Go back to number two, I think, yeah. So the, the main entryway, and, and these are just kind of our, our first shot at the elevations. So we don't see, like I talked, the, the grand steps coming down towards where the cars were yet or kind of retake, taking off the entry there with the little trees on our, on our main entry part. Just trying to drop it in to, to the site and get the context of where this building's go and, and the mass of it. But you can see in this, you know, picture, the, the color scheme, you know, matches the existing color of the, the Justice Center. So we're hoping to tie those two kind of together.
Kind of, the inspiration kind of for the tall windows actually came from the original courthouse. We started looking at that, and then on the upper floor has those tall skinny windows. We looked at doing an arch as the original courthouse was, and it didn't really tie in with the modern building. But we, we wanted to keep that same kind of vertical glazing feel of the original courthouse.
So the overhang that comes out, is that for snow protection? Because we get a lot of blowing snow.
I think it would offer a little bit of snow protection. I don't know if it would be covered, but it, it was kind of more for, for weather protection as well. More just is that's the identifiable, identifiable entry point for the building. It's, it's something to, when you're walking up this sidewalk, and, oh, that's where I go.
Just kind of identifying that grand entrance.
Also trying to, because this building's two stories taller than the existing Justice Building, it's something to kind of step down that scale where, when you're walking up to essentially a one-story building when you're standing out in the entryway. Instead of standing right next to a, a three-story building, it, it's just kind of that step to bring everything down to scale.
So we're really kind of open to, you know, your thoughts and impressions.
So from the street level, what's the height at its max?
Right now, we're, we had it at sixteen feet, four to four.
Okay.
The first level being, you know, the basement level kind of being buried. It's what, thirty-two, forty-eight feet above grade essentially.
Okay.
There would, it would end up being a little bit taller than that with some sort of screen wall up here to hide mechanical units behind. So it's probably looking at that fifty-five-ish, sixty feet, something below that.
Yeah.
And, and I think City of Court Lane's guidelines were anything over seventy-five feet.
Then you gotta start stepping back.
Yeah, then you gotta start stepping back.
We're not, we're not close to that on the design guidelines, yeah.
We're not, we're not close to that on the design guidelines, yeah.
We didn't wanna hit that at all.
I think it's pretty good.
It's.
I do too.
It seems functional.
Yeah, as it, as we kinda developed the elevations a little bit more and get the materials kinda dialed in and, and colors and get the, the steps and stuff in there. We didn't wanna go all the way without, you know, you seeing the elevations and saying, well, this is not really the direction we wanted to go. We wanted to make sure that we were going, you know, the direction that you liked and for the look and the feel of the campus and kinda further develop those elevations and get everything in there.
Is this pretty much to scale, or is it somewhat off?
Uh, it's pretty close. I'd say ninety-five percent close.
And I think if you go to first page, maybe? I, I think this back corner, like you were saying, the back corner in, in the image is really close to that street, or it's not gonna be that close to that street. Um, it, it does step back a little from there.
And that, that's.
It's just sometimes, it's the angle of the camera in Google Earth.
Yeah.
You know, this is, it's always, it's hard to get it accurate in there.
Plus the city would have setbacks, wouldn't it?
For sure.
Yeah, it's, in, in reality, it's not, it's not that close to the street. It's, it's further back. It's just the angle of the photograph that, from the satellite, that was to.
And this, this is the really old Google Earth photograph that hasn't been updated yet. But it's trying to kinda show context of how it fits in with the gas station and that other building, and trying to get some height.
Well, and, and from this angle, that overhang doesn't look near as our place as it does, I think, in the other.
Yeah, yeah. It, it was trying to, I mean, really it only carries over to kinda the exit doors.
Yeah.
We're really just kinda covering that portion of it.
Yes. No, I like it.
Yeah, I do too. I don't have really any.
Yeah. It's aesthetic, it's, it's functional.
We're still trying to bring that, but a courthouse has to stand for a long time, so it has to, it can't be too trendy or you know, it's gotta be, stand the test of time. It's gonna be there for a long time. It's trying to use materials and masses that are, are gonna be able to stand the test of time, I guess.
So, so one of the next steps would be to, is to develop this a little bit further, but then go have a, I would go have a preliminary meeting with the City of Cordelia, with just planning the, before I make an actual application for a design review. I do an informal review with them and make sure, because there are some things in here that don't necessarily meet the design review guidelines. Um, especially with the frontage onto Northwest Boulevard, but the building, it's not a it, it, you got a lot of security type issue things with that lower floor. And the, the design guidelines want a lot of glass down there, and we don't want a lot of glass because of what's being housed in that part of the building.
Right, right.
Yeah, exactly.
Um, yeah, and, and I guess from the drawing end too, we haven't really laid a structural grid in there to try and figure out where columns are gonna go and, and things like that. Um, and also just nailing down materials and, and kinda getting the assembly types like that. See how, a little closer to how everything's actually gonna go together.
And those, a lot of the vertical elements would be, you know, similar in color to the existing brick of the.
Right.
Yes.
Other building.
The other building.
We were just talking about this this morning, our guys that render for us, they, they render the colors and then they turn the sunlight on.
Yeah.
On the model, and it washes all the colors out.
Yeah.
Well, this, like, this one is more color correct than the other one, yeah.
Yeah, so what's our next step?
Yeah, um, next steps, like Cory said, we're gonna kinda take their, the floor plan and the site plan and come, and go visit with the city.
Go visit with the city.
Make sure that we're kinda staying within all the guidelines and that it's gonna kinda, you know, meet their design review, um, requirements. And that we've got all those, um, areas taken care of. And on, on our end, we're looking at the building and starting to put, you know, our structural grid in there. You know, kinda refining those materials and wall thicknesses and getting those assemblies put together. Um, kinda squeezing the floor plan, you know, as much as we can, kinda getting that square foot down a little tighter. And, you know, doing some more work on the site with like the, the grand steps and, and just how it ties in with the rest of the buildings.
And when do we explore, or are we already, and I don't think we are, with the general contractor?
Yeah, um, you know, you could, you're about that point right now. Uh, where we, our plans and elevations are, are pretty much set with the, with just minor tweaks to it as far as materials, that you could start advertising for that contractor, for the, um, construction manager. And get them on board to take a look at the, the drawings and elevations that we've got. And have them kinda start their preliminary cost estimate for the project as well. Which would be a good, um, kinda second look at, um, what, you know, we thought that our cost estimate was, um, as well. So give, have them narrow that down a little bit further and see what theirs are, make sure that we're coming together rather than going apart on the, the costs, for sure.
And I would say that would be kind of a nice, a- about as long as it would take you guys to go through the selection process would be plenty of time for us to meet with the city and, and get everything nailed down as far as.
So, so we'll be on parallel paths?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause that, that process, you know, you put out RFQ for, um, construction manager. Probably take you a couple weeks to put that together, and it'll be out on the street for a, a couple weeks, so you're a month before you made the interviews for contractors, construction managers.
Yeah, so, um, and then Cory and I have a, um, a template kind of already.
Oh, for the RFP?
For the RFQ.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then to go. The reason why we haven't gotten started on it was twofold, the money was number one, but number two, you know, I've been having conversations with Pat about design bid build versus CMGC. And that's why we were, our presentations got canceled twice. So I may just be able to go with what Pat and I have gone back and forth on, and then be able to present that to the full board um, to make that decision.
Yeah, and I'd, I'd be more than happy to talk to you about, with everybody about the CMGC process. I mean, we've done, we've done it on several other projects.
Yeah, and, and the jail is familiar, but, yeah, but I just know that there's been some internal, um, concerns that I wanna make sure we address as we go forward. So, um, Pat, would you be, uh, willing to maybe kinda do a, a small presentation on that?
Yeah, I, I guess I'm gonna need to know more about how the, cause I wasn't involved with the jail expansion.
Okay.
Um, situation and how, you know, who reviewed that for procurement law compliance and how, you know, and how it was justified. How it's proposed to be done in this case, cause I'm, you know, anything less than a full competitive bid just gets my, you know, gets my radar up.
Would it pay to talk with Sean Riley?
Yeah, and, and it, it.
He was very intimately.
It is, I mean, I, I was involved in all that too.
Yeah, okay, oh, okay.
So I know a lot of it, and, and I've done, I've done that process.
Okay, cool.
Other projects. I'd be more than happy to sit down with Pat.
Okay, good.
And talk it through with him too. It, it is still all, all competitive bid with all the subcontractors. They still all, all have to be low bid in that process. You're just selecting the general contractor with the process.
Yeah, if, if you don't mind, Pat, talking to Cory, cause I have not been able to adequately cover the concerns, um, in my dealings.
I haven't been adequately able to find the laws that, that allow it, so.
Cory, could you explain, you know, for all of us, the difference between a CMGC and a design bid build?
Sure, so a design build too.
I'm sorry?
And, and, you know, and between that and design build too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and you guys chime in too. So your traditional design bid build method is, we as architects draw everything up. Then we put it out on the street for bidding to the general contractors.
Okay.
And they bid it, and then they construct it.
Okay.
That process tends to be a little more adversarial, because it, there, there's, you're all you're all sitting across from each other, all three parties in that situation, the owner, the contractor, the con- and the architect.
Architect, okay.
So, and that's, that's traditionally, that's probably your lowest price, but, but the other potential issue with that is you typically have more change orders with that process. Um, because they bid exactly what they see, um, on the plans. With a, with a CMGC process, you select your contractor based upon qualifications. Just like you've selected the architect that way, you go through basically the same process for that. And then they become part of the team. And then, and, and how's I look at it, I've always looked at it with the CMGC process. We're all sitting, instead of us sitting across from a table from each other, we're sitting around a round table, and we're working together to give you the best project that you can get.
Um, on the, um, on the design bid build, I always like the analogy of, let's say you're gonna put a pool at your house, right? You need a contractor to build it, and you put your plans out to the public to build this pool, and you get this, the low bid come in and say, oh, your, your bid's great, I'll build my pool for that. And the, the contractor has never built a pool before, right? And halfway through their construction, they figure out a few things, cause they've never built a pool before, and they're like, oh, this is gonna be this much more. And, you know, et cetera, et cetera. Like, well, why didn't you take care of that before? They're, well, I've never built a pool. I didn't know I had to, to, you know, bid that stuff. With a, a, a construction manager, you, you're picking that construction manager based on their qualifications to build the type of building that you're doing, whether it's like a jail or a courthouse. You've got a contractor that understands the, the intricacies of that typ- type of project. They still go out to their subcontractors and competitively bid, um, each different part of the project. You know, three different contractors for GIP board, and they, that they're able to pick the price based on, um, how it fits into the overall price that, that they gave in the county to, to build the building. So it, it, there still is that.
What, what do your initials actually stand for?
It's construction manager as, and general contractor.
I'm sorry.
CM is construction manager, and the GC is general contractor.
General.
So CN, it's a construction manager as general contractor.
Thank you.
And, and, you know, construction management can be, you know, can be done through the, you know, qualifications-based procurement process. So just, you, anytime you mix those professional design services that are, that are covered under, under one statute, and you've got actual construction services that are constructed under others that are must, much stricter, you know, and the, and, you know, to have them intake the low bidder, and you start mixing the two without, without clear legal authority to do so, then that, that's when it gets dicey.
Okay.
But to let out the construct, you know, just a construction management contract, you can do that through, you know, qualification-based procurement. That's, that's not a problem.
And then that construction manager still puts out to public bid all of the.
Components.
All the components, right.
I think maybe, maybe a little bit of the confusion was using the term CMGC, because when I hear general contractor, I think.
Bid, right, right.
Right.
Yes. Yeah, but they're, they're also act, they, they are acting as the general contractor and the.
Yeah, and they, yeah.
But they still bid out, like you said, they still bid out all the components.
As long as the construction, actual construction work is built, bid out, then that's not an issue.
And all, all the, and the general contractor, all the subs, they all have to have public works license by state law and all that.
Right, yeah.
All those rules still apply to.
Okay, well, I feel a bit, a little bit better now than.
So then when you do, I, I actually have a statute, I, I have a copy of it that I can send to you too.
Okay.
And then you get a, a, a construction manager that has, let's say they've got five different subcontractors that do concrete work, that they work with all the time. Uh, well, they know that the three of those contractors, subcontractors that they've worked with before have built courthouses with them. So they'll take those three and say, hey, we're gonna build a courthouse. I know you guys are, are qualified to do that. I'm gonna put these bids out to, to you three, and let me see what you got. I'm not gonna bid these other two because they've only done sidewalks, right?
Right.
Seems like what we're running into, and I don't wanna mad, badmouth the low bid process too much, but what we're, what we've been running into, and we just ran into this, this morning, came out an email, but the, with the design bid build process is, the contractor will come back and, well, we didn't bid that. Now, they ask you guys to pay more money for it, even though they bid the project, there's just parts of it that get missed, that they won't bid, or they won't have a sub for it at the time. And then it'll come back in later and say, well, this is way more expensive now, you guys gotta pay for it. Whereas with the construction manager process, they give you the gross mass, maximum price upfront, and you know your building's gonna be built for that.
Right.
There's always unforeseen circumstances that come up if they, something happens where it could go over that.
But like on a jail, they, they built in some contingency pricing.
Yeah.
To take in account for some of those change orders, or things that the owner wanted to add.
Right.
After the fact that they thought about, oh wait, we, we forgot to tell you about this, we wanna add this element to it too. The, with the, the CMGC process, um, the, the contractors on board early on. And they're part of the, they're helping us look at the design, they're doing the cost estimating instead of the architect, and.
They also offer some constructability.
And they have construct, and they also look at constructability issues. So as we're designing it and drawing things up, they'll say, hey, you know, if, if we do it this way, we can do it more cost effectively and save money in the project. So we're doing some value engineering of the project as we're designing it.
Yeah.
When you do the, the traditional design bid build, design bid build method, then what happens is that you're not getting that input from the contractor. I mean, we ask questions sometimes, the guys when, that we know, but we still don't get that upfront. And then what ends up happening, the project comes in over budget, then you gotta value engineer things. It's not really value engineering. It's what can we cut out?
Yeah.
To get it back in the budget? Well, the reality of it is, is that when you do that, you don't get a hundred percent of the value back. You get maybe seventy-five percent of the value back, whereas if you do it upfront, you get a better, truer cost of it. So you get a better control of the money with the CMGC process.
And I think we saved a million dollars on the jail because of that process.
Yeah, and it is, and basically, it, it, the contingency didn't get dipped into very far on that.
Yeah.
Because of that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, what's, what, at least on the surface is appealing, is the, is the fact that you, you've got a single point of contact.
Yes.
And that single point of contact is basically making the determination as to, as you pointed out, the levels of expertise and the qualification. So we've got a single individual that we can hold accountable.
Yeah.
And depend, and rely on his expertise and experience.
Yeah, I mean, you, you get that with both, really. The, and the third one that got brought up was, was design, uh, design build. Now, the difference with design build is that in the process you're doing right now, you've hired an architectural team for, as, and we're working for you, we're under contract with you. With a design build process, you hire a, a contractor, and then the architect, or the contractor hires the architects.
Right.
And then our contract is with the contractor.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so when it comes down to any kind of issues or anything like that, uh, and we do what the contract, cause our contract's with the contractor, we're working for him, we're a sub for him.
Okay, okay, I get it.
So that's, that's the big difference with that one.
And I could almost see that in a residential.
Yeah, it happens. I know the city, the city of, the city of, uh, Lewiston right now is doing a fire station, and they're using the.
Design build.
Design build method.
Uh huh.
And I, I interviewed with that, with General Construction, and then they, but they picked a different firm for that. And, but the reality of it is, is that as the architect, I, I prefer the CMGC process because it, it just, I think the relationships work better, because we're working for you, the contractor's working for you instead of us being a sub. Cause then if, if something comes up, I go, well, I'm on the contractor's side. I have to be on the contractor's side. Because that's.
He's paying.
That's, he's paying us, right, yeah.
Okay.
IDOC does all design build projects for the most part. Um, just cause that gives them, they feel like that gives them a little more control over the contractor, I think. Where they can use the materials they wanna use and, and so on, but.
Yeah, laws, the laws that apply to the state are, are.
A little bit different.
Yeah, they, they more specifically allowed for design build contracts, particularly ITD. Their laws that apply to them have a set of, a whole chapter of statute relating to design build.
Okay.
Projects where, I think that's a, you know, shortcoming of the, the procurement laws that, that pertain to political subdivisions, that they give lip service to saying design build is allowed, but it doesn't, you know, expl- build is allowed, but it doesn't, you know, explain what the interplay to that.
I, I see it, I see way more public projects going more the, the CMGC route, because it does give you control over your selection of who your general contractor is, and, and I, I think there's a lot of value to bring in the contractor on board early, especially on, on big projects, where they can have a lot of input into what we're designing. Um, we, way back, um, it's been almost twenty years now, we did post-fall city hall that way, um, and they brought the contractor in too late, um, they brought the, and, and unfortunately, it did not work out right, cause they, and part of that was they wanted to do a green lead building, and the contractor wasn't performing on that, and we ended up, they let them go.
Wow.
And we ended putting it out for bid traditional method, um, but.
Delays, right?
Yeah, um, and that's always the fallback position that you can always go to if, if things get sideways, but, um, that's why you want to really vet the, the contractors upfront, so.
Okay, sounds good. All right then, so two parallel paths, you'll talk with the city and we'll prepare the, uh, RFQ. All right then.
Do that.
Any other questions? Public comment?
Anybody on the phone line?
Okay then, I've got eleven twenty-two, meeting adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.